Please.
College.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice abroad.
Thank you.
Hey, the first things on our agenda this morning is a consent agenda, approval of minutes of November 6th and November 12th. Approval of payroll, approval of vouchers, and proven signed monthly earnings and collections from the clerk, clerk of district court, and the sheriff. Pleasure the board.
Madam Chair, I've moved to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Well. The next thing on our agenda is actually a public hearing that starts at nine thirty-five, so we have a couple of minutes before we start that. And we'll have staff. Okay.
Hey Scott.
Yes.
That Mike said he would catch up with us at eight tomorrow morning here. You can be working.
I don't need to be. You can do it in here. Okay. I don't have to be.
You got this. That was, that was good.
Yeah.
The. Yes.
Just tell her not to bother.
Yeah, don't talk to her.
Yeah, well, yeah, I saw that.
That's pretty wild. I have a guest join me for our Christmas dinner on the seventeenth.
Joy, do you want to come on up? Started. Next thing on our agenda, we have Joy Hill and Erica from the Park County Planning and Zoning Department. A public hearing on Brock Kennel SUP 126, so we'll open that one, that public hearing and have a presentation first.
Madam Chair, thank you. Jennifer Kramer is at an appointment right now. She didn't quite make it back in time. As you know, the Brock Kennel SUP amendment, the materials for which were provided to you in advance of this meeting and also the complete record is in the planning and zoning department. I'll summarize the findings for you. Tammy and Ed Castigny, and hopefully I didn't butcher that, the applicant submitted a special use permit application on behalf of Paul and Christine Brock, the landowners. They are requesting approval of a second amendment to Brock Kennel SUP 126 to allow a reduction in size of the parcel associated with the existing cottage industry use from eleven point zero five acres to two point three eight acres. The landowners intend to complete a boundary line adjustment, which will result in the property being reduced in size. On November twentieth of two thousand twelve, the Park County Board of County Commissioners approved Brock Kennel SUP 126. The facility as originally approved was three thousand six hundred ninety-six square feet and contained eighteen dog boarding units, exercise areas, a cat boarding area, food preparation area, laundry facility, office, restrooms, and storage. Then on October, or I'm sorry, Octo, on February sixteenth, two thousand sixteen, the commissioners approved an amendment to SUP 126, approving a building expansion of one thousand fifty-six square feet for an indoor exercise area and five additional dog boarding units. Regulations specify that changes to an SUP may be approved by the planning director if minor. I did not determine that these changes are minor. As a result, the proposed amendment to SUP requires board approval and a public hearing. The amendment does not require site plan review. The use is classified as a cottage industry use. Ownership is affirmed by warranty deed. The use is approximately point eight five miles west of Highway fourteen A and approximately five miles northeast of Cody City limits. It's addressed as one twenty-nine, Road twenty. The property is located within a general rural five acre zoning district. Cottage industry uses are allowed in the GR five zoning district, provided an SUP is approved. Neighboring land uses are mostly agricultural with some residential and residential vacant lands nearby. The kennel facility has a permitted septic system and well. The kennel was expanded in two thousand sixteen and the SUP was amended, but it appears that a building permit was not obtained for that expansion. The site plan shows the existing kennel, septic system and well, along with the proposed residence location. Legal notice requirements were met. The application was forwarded to relevant agencies as required and they responded as follows. The Park County Treasurer stated property taxes due November tenth, two thousand twenty-four have not been paid. The Park County Weed and Pest stated the property and surrounding grounds are in good condition. Long-term noxious weed management plan will not be required. Park County Public Works has not provided a response and no public comments have been received. During the review of the initial application and First Amendment of the Brock Kennel SUP 126, the board determined that the proposed use is in harmony and compatible with the surrounding land uses and with the neighborhood and would not create a substantial adverse impact on adjacent properties. The proposed amended use, and again, the request to reduce the area impacted by the use, is not expected to result in a substantial adverse impact on adjacent properties. During a review of the original Brock Kennel SUP, the board found that adequate services and infrastructure are available to serve the use, or the applicants would provide those services. There are no specific criteria for the proposed use in the regulations and the proposed use is not located in an overlay district. Should the Board of County Commissioners approve this amendment to Brock Kennel SUP dash one twenty-six, staff recommends the following conditions of approval. Number one, Park County noise, lighting, and other nuisance regulations shall apply. Number two, the applicant shall obtain a building permit for the two thousand sixteen kennel expansion from the planning and zoning department. Number three, the applicant shall obtain a building permit and small wastewater permit for the proposed residence from the planning and zoning department. Number four, the applicant shall reside on the property within eighteen months of approval of the SUP amendment. Number five, the applicant shall approve or respond, provide a response from Park County Public Works. And number six, the applicant shall otherwise comply with the standards of the Park County Development Standards and Regulations. Madam Chair, I would certainly recommend that any conditions that pertain to the original SUP or the amendment carry forward in addition to these recommended conditions.
Thank you. Did you want to read those recommended conditions?
The original?
No, the ones that are on today's.
I just read them.
Read all of them?
Yes, I did.
Is there any public here that would like to speak to this request? Come on up and if you'd identify yourself, please. We need to use the mic for the record. Just come to the chair and the mic's right there. Yes, and if you would identify yourself first.
My name's Robert Goodix. I live at one five seven, Row twenty, just down the road from McCamp. Understanding they want to shrink the property. What happens? What does the other eight plus acres go into the agriculture or subdivisions or I'm just throwing?
No, that's fine. I understand your question and from what I understand of the proposal, Joy can certainly clarify it, but it's just going back into the larger parcel where the pivot is, and so it will be considered in the ag portion.
Okay.
Okay.
And if it would ever then turn into somebody decides that they want to subdivide it or something like that, it has to come back through here.
Oh, absolutely.
It's all you need to know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public that would like to speak to this issue? Come on up.
So.
Identify yourself, please.
Sandra Allhouse, Cody. What is the minimum lot size for that area?
It is a GR five zoning, but because of the lot size averaging ability in the Park County regulations, when you put this, the ownership is still there. When you average size, it works.
Okay.
You'd have to talk to Joy about how that works, but there is an ability to make it happen.
So that's how they got away with the other side being less than five acres?
Yes. Yes, from the beginning.
I lived out there for eighteen years. I was born on, you know, born out there. But what my problem is, is I like to leave the city in the city and not take the city to the country because then it causes problems because of the spirit of the people. Because you can't take the city into the, you can't take city people into the country, you know?
Understood.
And so I just, I just have a hard time with the whole subdivision, period. And I, I wish they would have done like five acres like out of it, you know, three D X where they did the big lot sizes. In, because it is the country and then you're losing the spirit of the country and you just have a little city in the country and I just have a hard time with that.
Okay, thank you. Understood. Joy?
Madam Chair, just to sort of answer Ms. Allhouse's concerns, this particular parcel originated as a family exemption quite a few years ago, and it was very small at that time, but it was actually north of where it's currently being proposed. And then later the, the lot was actually expanded to around eleven acres, probably because of this use being proposed. And now they're shrinking it back down, but putting it way down to the south on the property. The boundary line adjustment that would follow this approval will take that existing acreage out of the SUP and put it in that larger parcel that's to the north. And when they do the boundary line adjustment, it will be conditioned to lot size averaging. So let's say, for instance, that landowner chooses to do a subdivision in the future, then on the record of survey, it will notify staff and the board that this is subject to lot size averaging and that would limit potentially the future subdivision of that larger property. So that's how that works and that's what the rule allows for.
Good, thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak? Anyone else from the public that would like to speak on this subject?
Madam Chair, I move to close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Been moved and seconded to close the public hearing? Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Okay. It's a pleasure of the board.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the Brock Kennel SUP one twenty-six with staff conditions.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the request for Brock Kennel SUP number one twenty-six with conditions. Any further discussion on the motion? Yes, sir.
Madam Chair, I question why we have condition two. You're trying to backdate eight years for a building permit. What's the reasoning for that?
Madam Chair, when you approved that amendment, I believe it was understood that they were to obtain that permit at that time and did not. That's my understanding. It's part of the rules that they do that. It would not be a big deal for them to obtain a building and zoning permit for that.
You're talking two different owners now, right? The, that was, twenty sixteen was done by, was under a different owner and this application is done by somebody else is the owners. The owners are, I can go back to the top. I'm terrible with names, but you're holding them accountable for something that was built eight years ago. It's the applicant and request is by.
But it's for Brock's, the owners, and I think they were the original.
The applicant is Tammy and Ed Castigny.
But keep reading, keep reading.
Yeah, on behalf of the owners.
On behalf of the owners.
Yeah. And I believe the Brock's were the owners at the time. I would have to look back at that.
Yes, they were.
Yeah, I mean, they deeded to themselves this property in two thousand twenty-four for trust purposes.
I mean, it's not a big deal. I just, it's just, it's already under taxes. The, the billing permit doesn't really solve anything.
Well, the, the building permit actually triggers the assessor's office to assess. And so if it wasn't obtained, then there's no guarantee that the assessor would have gone out to assess that change to adjust. So I can't answer that. I don't know if they've done that since that time.
The applicant didn't have a problem. I don't have a problem with it. It just seems kind of petty to me to go back on something that's in the years of the past that doesn't change anything. It's already on the assist.
And he just cleans up the records probably as much as anything else. Any other discussion on the motion? Hey, we have a motion in front of us to approve the Brock Kennel SUP one twenty-six with conditions as listed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Okay, an SUP is approved.
Madam Chair, that will be resolution twenty twenty-four sixteen three.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steph.
See Jenny?
Yeah, the next is not a public hearing, so I think we can keep moving whenever you get ready, Jenny. The next thing is Jenny Kramer and the amended plat of Adams number three subdivision lot one. Okay. Good idea.
Sorry. I knew we was going out there in the mix.
Might not have known.
Okay. Yes, so this is the amended plat of Adams number three subdivision lot one. George Schnell submitted an amended plat application and requests approval of the partial vacation and amended plat of Adams number three subdivision specifically lot one. The result of approval would be the, would be the vacation of original lot one and the creation of lot one oh one and lot one oh two, which will be one point eight two acres and eight point one eight acres. The lots will continue to be used for residential use. The original plat for the Adams number three subdivision was approved by the board on April seventh of nineteen seventy-seven and the plat created two lots. And then in nineteen eighty-one, lot one was divided by just a recorded warranty deed and record of survey. The warranty deed also granted an easement and right of way thirty feet wide, located fifteen feet west of the east boundary of the south half of lot one. Neither a re-subdivision or an amended plat action was taken with that division resulting in complicated lot descriptions, which would be further complicated by a newly proposed amendment. Therefore, approval of this amended plat includes the entirety of original lot one to include, include a legal description of the resulting properties and now designate new lot configurations accordingly. Staff recommends that following approval of the amended plat, new deeds be filed for each lot to clarify legal ownership of the new lot descriptions. Ownership of the north half of lot one is affirmed to George and Tanya Schnell. Ownership of the south half of lot one is affirmed to be held by Loretta R. Walker. Lot one is located approximately one point two miles northeast of the city of Cody on the north side of Pat O'Hara Mountain Drive and east of Dutton Trail with addresses of four three three nine and forty-four hundred Pat O'Hara Mountain Drive. Current use of the property is residential with some productive playground. The proposed lots are both developed, each with a residence permitted septic system and other accessory structures. Surrounding land uses are residential to the east, south, and west. Ag land lies north of the property. Seven Mountain subdivision is west and south and Sage Creek Rim subdivision is east of lot one. The subdivision is located within the RH zoning district and it allows moderate density, half acre average density. Residential housing development served by public sewer and water. Neither lots are served by public water and sewer. However, no new lots are being created and there appears to be adequate room for septic system and septic systems and water wells on each reconfigured lot. This is a partial vacation and amended plat is required and the planning director determined no public hearing is necessary. Agency referral requirements have been met and responded as follows. Park County Treasurer's Office confirmed the property taxes for the parcel described as the north half of lot one are paid current for two thousand twenty-three. And at that time, the first half of the two thousand twenty-four taxes would be due on November tenth. But based on the ITAX website as of yesterday, the first half of two thousand twenty-four have been paid for the, for the north half. However, on the south half of lot one, those property taxes are currently delinquent. The applicant stated the, those delinquent taxes on the south half will be paid as part of the closing transaction on the land of the title company. Closing will occur once the plat has been recorded. They won't record the plat until, or they won't close the transaction until the plat has been recorded. The Wyoming Game and Fish Department says they have no terrestrial wildlife comments. The Cody Canal Irrigation District stated a water distribution plan had been presented for their board to review on the November fourteenth meeting and that was approved and we have the approved plan in our office. Park County Public Works reviewed the amended plat application and have no comment regarding the proposal. DEQ provided agency contacts and information for permitting. The Park County Weed and Pest District does not provide a comment. No public comments have been received. The plat review committee reviewed the amended plat and revised amended plat was received with those changes made and the amended plat meets the requirements outlined in the Park County Regulations. Staff recommends approval of the amended plat of the Adams number three subdivision lot one with the following conditions. Number one, prior to recording the amended plat, the applicant shall provide prepared ownership conveyances of the individual lots resulting from the amended plat to Park County Planning and Zoning Department for recording upon closing of the title. Prior to recording the amended plat, the applicant shall provide an approved water distribution plan to the Park County Planning and Zoning Department to be recorded with the amended plat and the applicant shall comply with standards in the Park County Development Regulations and the minimum subdivision requirements as set forth in Wyoming Statute eighteen dash five dash three oh six. If you have any questions, we're hopefully, thank you.
Thank you. Now, this is not a public hearing, so I guess I would just ask other questions.
Madam Chair, under number two, did I misunderstand? Did you say there's already a distribution plan?
Yes, and that was an update after this, so we could strike condition number two. Comments, concerns? The taxes question, which is kind of normal that we usually don't do these unless taxes are paid up and everything's up front because there is no guarantee. I don't know whether we can put a condition on and how that works if you put a condition on and the plot's already reported. I don't know.
No. And this is something I'm, yeah, I'm not timing wise if I, I guess if the, if the amended plat is approved and recorded. If the closing doesn't happen, I think it would need to be nullified because.
It's not, not in existence.
Right, right. So I don't, I don't know if it's a problem that they're paid at closing or, or prior to, but I know we do typically. Yeah, so.
Thoughts are if you want to add anything or not.
Madam Chair, I'm not sure, like, listening to Jenny, I'm not sure we do if you think through because opposing cannot occur on something that's not in existence. And if it's, if it's, I gotta think about that.
I know. It is a catch twenty-two.
It will be in existence. The plat will be approved. Then the yeah. There's no guarantee that they're going to go through with the closing.
Is there a condition that if the closing fails, then the plat is null and void?
We can add that. Joy told us we'd be doing something we wanted.
Just asking.
Madam Chair, I'll take a stab at this. I will, I will make a motion that we approve with the removal of condition number two, which we could replace with in the event that the taxes are not brought to, we're not paid in full, that the plat is null and void.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the amended plat for Adams number three subdivision lot one with the removal of condition number two replaced with having taxes paid in, if the taxes are not paid in full, the plat will be null and void.
Madam Chair, I will amend that too. Taxes not paid in full at time of closing.
At time of closing.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. So you'll add that condition in the resolution, please.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, Madam Chair, I'm going to step on the last one. It should have been resolution twenty three versus two. This one. Thank you.
Okay. No problem. Thank you.
Yes.
And I guess you're staying right there. One more. I guess the owners are here, so move on a little bit. The next thing on our agenda, Jenny Kramer, Park County Planning and Zoning Department, Erica. Oliver's Eden, simple sub number three twenty-four, final plat.
Perfect. Thank you, Madam Chair. William Oliver, the applicant on behalf of the William R. Oliver Living Trust, the landowner, submitted a final plat application requesting approval of the final plat of Oliver's Eden SS dash three twenty-four to create one twenty-five point one seven acre lot and one eleven point two six acre lot for residential and ag use from an existing thirty-six point four three acre parcel. Ownership of the property has been affirmed to be in the William R. Oliver Living Trust. The parcel is located approximately two point two miles northeast of Cody at the terminus of Park County Road two EE with an address of one fifteen, Row two EE. Neighboring land uses are primarily ag and residential with BOR exempt land to the east. Proposed lot one has a permitted barn. Proposed lot two is developed with a permitted residence and septic system. The topography is rolling on the northeastern portion of the property. Otherwise, there is little change in elevation. The proposed subdivision is in RR two, a RR two zoning district and the lot sizes as proposed are consistent with that zoning district. A notice of intent to subdivide was published as required. Simple subdivisions are exempt from public hearing requirements. Relevant agencies were notified as required and responded as follows. Park County School District number six can provide bus service to the proposed subdivision. The Fire District stated they can provide fire suppression provided all roads and crossings are constructed to County Road and Bridge weight specifications. TCT stated they have terrestrial wireless service available in this area. USPS can provide mail service to the proposed subdivision. Black Hills Energy stated they have a two inch main on the road to EE right of way and they do not foresee any issues with serving the proposed subdivision. Cody Conservation District provided a soils report and identified four primary soil types on the property. Dwellings with or without basements vary in ratings from not limited to very limited. Limitations are due to slope. Septic tank absorption fields are somewhat and very limited due to slow water movement and depth to bedrock and filtering capacity. Garland Light and Power stated they can, current, stated they currently serve lot two and would also be able to serve lot one. Park County Weed and Pest did find some noxious weeds during previous surveys. Therefore, a long-term noxious weed management plan is required and has already been received. Hart Mountain Irrigation District has responded and a water distribution plan is required and it has been approved by the HMID Board. Park County Treasurer stated that taxes are paid current. DEQ provided a general list of notifications, permits, and certificates required for various activities that could impact surface or groundwater. Game and Fish stated they have no terrestrial wildlife comments and offered their standard subdivision recommendations. North Restoral Water District stated the service is currently installed for the new proposed lot. Park County Public Works confirmed there is legal access from Park County Road two EE by direct frontage. Park County Public Works confirmed there is legal access from Park County Road two E E by direct frontage. Across Road two E E is a crushed gravel surface road, and it is maintained by Park County Public Works. No new subdivision roads are proposed at this time. Lots one and two are currently served by existing and separate access points to the county road. Any new accesses or improvements uh to the county road for either of the lots will require um a right-of-way permit from Public Works. The existing residence is addressed as is currently addressed as one fifteen. Any new structures dwellings that are constructed may be addressed after a building permit's been issued. A drainage erosion control plan will not be required by them at this time. No public comments have been received. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the subdivision with conditions on October sixteenth. The applicant has placed the appropriate notes and conditions on the final plat regarding the permitting requirements for wells at the State Engineers Office. And they've also placed a note about the Wyoming right to farm and ranch after nineteen ninety-one. The applicant has provided an affidavit stating that a legal fence exists around the perimeter of the proposed subdivision. The plat review committee reviewed the final plat and are corrected. Plat was submitted. Um, applicable final plat specifications have been met. And they have submitted supporting documents as specified in Appendix Four. A subdivision improvements agreement is not required since no applicable improvements are proposed or incomplete. The Planning and Zoning Department staff recommends approval of the final plat of Oliver's Eden SS dash three twenty-four with the following conditions. Number one, the applicant in the presence of a member of the Planning and Zoning Department staff shall record the final plat and all required final plat submissions in the office of the county clerk and recorder. And number two, the applicant shall otherwise comply with standards in the Park County Development Regulations and the minimum subdivision requirements as set forth in Wyoming Statute eighteen dash five dash three oh six. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Jenny? Questions? Okay.
To approve, Madam Chair.
Second.
Good condition?
With conditions.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Oliver's Eden, a simple sub three twenty-four final plat with conditions as stated. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose? Motion passes. Thank you.
Sixty-four.
Thank you.
Thank you, Collins.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
We are on break.
Which one are you talking about?
Yeah. I agree. Huh?
Been busy, huh?
Yeah, yeah, a lot of cow hunters.
Peterbilt model five forty-eight. I should have said that on the last one. Two dump trucks, five hundred ninety-one thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollars and zero cents. That's five hundred ninety-one thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollars and zero cents. They offered course to trade same as last time forty thousand dollars for truck number one, the two thousand ten mobiles. And then forty-four thousand for truck number two, the two thousand thirteen mobiles dump truck. The total offer then is eighty-four thousand net bid, five hundred and seven thousand eight seventy-six. And delivery date four hundred days from receipt of award. Oh, four hundred plus, I better be careful, four hundred plus.
We don't know.
Yeah.
At some point in the future.
Yeah. their bid for two new, uh, three quarter ton gas powered four wheel drive crew cab pickups, one hundred and six thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars. Again, that's for two of them. One oh six, three seven oh and zero cents. And it looks like on option two for the trade, they gave us a price for the two thousand six Ford F two fifty crew cab four wheel drive, uh, four thousand dollars.
Brian, what's the make and model on these pickups?
Oh, I'm sorry. That's, um, this is a, so yeah, this is a Super Duty Ford. Yeah, and I think, uh, yeah, I have T fifties. And they have a delivery date of four to six months. No, they didn't. Yeah. That's fine.
Madam Chair, yes.
Yeah, we only have one trade in.
We, we had two that were listed. We're looking at whether or not we're going to do auction. We may do an auction, so we're just, we're just.
So you listed an oh six for a Ford. It was that one or?
Uh, that's just, the four thousand was just for the two thousand six Ford F two fifty.
Which are other?
The other truck is a two thousand seven Chevy Silverado twenty-five hundred HD.
And they didn't offer any trade for that?
No, and that it's long story, but no.
Okay.
Okay. And the next one is Denny Benhold Chevrolet. Okay, bid for two new three quarter ton gas four wheel drive crew cab pickups, ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars and zero cents. That's ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars and zero cents. And on the Ford F two fifty trade, the two thousand six listed four thousand dollars. And no bid for the two thousand seven Chevy Silverado.
And the make and model on what they're bidding?
Yep, um, Silverado crew cab four by four, two thousand twenty-five, three quarter tons. Chevy Silverado. Delivery date, a hundred and twenty days from order. Um, I do see the list warranty detail, three years, thirty-six thousand miles bumper to bumper, and five year or a hundred thousand mile powertrain. And Bert's here. If anybody's got questions for Bert. That's the pickups.
Just the two?
Just the two, yeah. And now we'll do the, um, the end dumps, the dump trucks, and of course, these are plow trucks, so they're with plow, um, sander, and, uh, what else? Plowing sander. Yeah, here. Yeah, this is for two trucks. Um, six hundred and thirty-one thousand, one hundred and thirty. And again, this is two new tandem axle dump trucks, complete with the plow sander. Six hundred and thirty-one thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars and zero cents. And, uh, they also listed for the trade, uh, truck number one was a two thousand ten Volvo dump truck. Uh, bid for the trade, forty thousand dollars. Bid for truck number two, two thousand thirteen Volvo dump truck, forty-four thousand dollars. Uh, so that total offer for the trade is eighty-four thousand dollars. Would be a net of five hundred and forty-seven thousand, one hundred and thirty. What was that again, Brian? Uh, the net was five hundred and forty-seven thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars and zero cents. And the, um, looked like the schedule, two hundred and thirty days for receipt of award. And they're saying, uh, approximately September, October, two thousand twenty-five is, would be the chassis. Or our chassis would be available in about a hundred twenty days. So I think a lot of the outfits, what's causing a lot of delays. Okay, which that one? Was that a Peterbilt with a Coy Brothers outfit? Peterbilt model five forty-eight. I should have said that on the last one. Uh, two dump trucks, five hundred and ninety-one thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars and zero cents. That's five hundred and ninety-one thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars and zero cents. They offered, of course, the trade, same as last time, forty thousand dollars for truck number one, the two thousand ten Volvos. And then forty-four thousand for truck number two, the two thousand thirteen Volvos dump truck. The total offer then is eighty-four thousand, net bid, five hundred and seven thousand, eight seventy-six. And delivery date, four hundred days for receipt of award. What? Oh, four hundred plus. I better be careful. Four hundred plus.
What? We don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then it says approximately January of two thousand twenty-six. They did list some itemized things, the chassis, a hundred and twenty days, the dump body, a hundred and twenty-one days, sander, a hundred and thirty days, and the plow, four hundred plus days. The plows are really tough right now. Guys?
Madam Chair, Peterbilt, Wyoming, the model was the same, yeah, the five forty-one or five forty-eight?
Yep. CMI? Okay, it's pretty thick, so that scares me. Okay, uh, this is for Mack trucks, um, and again, CMI out of Casper. Uh, model's GR six four BK. Total price for two trucks, five hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and four dollars and zero cents. That's five hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and four dollars and zero cents. We'd have to, that looks correct on the, let's see, yeah, the next one, it says, on the option two with the trade, it says five hundred and four, one oh four. So I think the, the, the math is wrong, but the first one I think's right.
They're giving the six hundred bucks on the trade in, is what I was, yeah, my cowboy math.
Yep, so on the trade, yeah, the net's different, but no, it's something, their, their ads different, see?
Oh, yeah.
Two thousand, seven hundred and four dollars and zero cents. Delivery date, August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five. It's pretty specific. Um, that's kind of all I see there.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Who's going to the outfit on those?
You know, that's a really good question. Probably do their own, okay. Yeah, because I'm not seeing any details of that. We will check into that. Okay, that's that. The next one.
And?
Yes. This cavity is the most complicated. Well, the last one's Floyd's truck, and I believe they will have three different options here. Uh, for the outfit.
Is that Casper?
Yeah, they're out of Casper, Gillette too, but yeah, this is Floyd's truck. Okay, um, first bid. This is for a Western Star truck. Uh, heel dump box, Swenson spreader, hanky plow, all outfitted by Coy Brothers. Five hundred and eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars and zero cents. That's five hundred and eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars and zero cents. They offered for a trade, the two thousand ten dump truck, twenty-seven thousand, five hundred. For the two thousand, he says, crossed it out, said sixteen Volvo dump truck, that's if you're wrong. Um, fifty-two thousand, five hundred. This may be some of the confusing, because he's crossed out some numbers here. But yeah, fifty-two thousand, five hundred, total eighty thousand dollars. Net five hundred and one thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight. That's a net of five hundred and one thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight. Delivery dates, April, two thousand twenty-six. But it says, see notes from body installer, so that won't go into too much there. Um, the next bid option is, uh, a Western Star with a Williamson Godwin, um, box, Monroe spreader and plow, installed by Ameritech. Um, model, uh, forty-seven X. Quantity two, six hundred and twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars and zero cents. That's six hundred and twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars and zero cents. The bid, same as before, twenty-seven thousand, five hundred for the two thousand ten Volvo. And then fifty-two thousand, five hundred for the, uh, for the other truck, for the two thousand thirteen Volvos. Yeah, there's some confusion there, so keep knowing that. Um, total offer on trade, eighty thousand dollars. The net, five hundred and forty-six thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars and zero cents. Delivery date, October, two thousand twenty-five. Okay, the last one is, uh, for Western Star, TBEI dump box, Swenson spreader, hanky plow, all installed and outfitted by J-Craft. And they're out of, uh, Minnesota. Uh, model forty-seven X trucks, quantity two, six hundred and thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars and zero cents. That's six hundred and thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars and zero cents. Uh, same thing for the trade, the two thousand ten is twenty-seven thousand, five hundred. For truck number two, the Volvo, fifty-two thousand, five hundred. Total offer for trade, eighty thousand dollars. Net bid, um, after trade, five hundred and fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars and zero cents. Net bid after trade, five hundred and fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars and zero cents. Delivery date, April, two thousand twenty-six. That's kind of the highlights.
Hey, my understanding is that you will take these and review everything.
We're gonna, we're gonna try. We'll see if we get this.
Let us know. You're on the schedule for one fifty for decisions if you have all the information you need. If not, we can.
We should be, for sure, the pickups for sure, and we'll see how we do on the dump truck.
Okay. Thank you. Yes.
Have you done business with all these people, CMI?
Oh, not since I've been here. Have we done any work with CMI? The other two we have, Peterbilt and, uh, Floyd's.
Okay. Anything else for Brian? I think we're good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Hey, Brian, do you know any, any places that have done business with CMI?
Um, yes.
Okay. Yes, thanks.
Um, we have a few minutes. We are expecting, um, Mayor Hall, maybe a couple others, I'm not sure. I know Mayor Hall was coming over to, uh, to talk about these bylaws for the state shooting complex, or at least draft bylaws to possibly, um, approve them enough to, to, well, send them to city council for tonight and then on to the state of Wyoming for preliminary approval.
There's all standing out there.
Are they out there?
They're coming.
It is your time. It is your time.
Mr. Spoor is going to be here today.
No, he's not. He, uh, got called out of town, so he will not be here today. Are these? Are these, have they changed?
This is the one that Scott sent me last night. What I wanted to do with this document is I just wanted to show you about the changes. There were a lot meaning and all the changes that was made. But not particularly discussed that the last meeting. Okay. Baron, I mean about those changes, so what you will see is, uh, um, it's materially the same until you get to section five, appointment terms of office for the joint powers board. And down in about three quarters of the way to that, Mr. Kopecky added the language, a member of the board may be removed for cause by a majority vote of the term. Majority vote of the governing bodies that appointed the member. And what that is to say is that if the county voted the member, then the county could remove the member of the city. Previously, it stated that it would take both parties. Member may suit in certain multiple terms as appropriate. Cause for removal of a member includes, but it's not limited to lack of participation, lack of attendance at meetings, or failure to adequately represent the interests of the governing body that appointed them. That's his language. Okay, the, the second change was the one that I offered, um, in this forum two weeks ago, a week ago. It's item H under section six. And it adds the power to solicit, engage, um, other advisory members who provide insight and information relevant to the operation of the shooting complex. That's so we can include state agency officials, state parks, uh, game and fish. The hoodoo ranches request that we be part of the group as an advisor, not as a voting member. And so those people would be welcome under that provision. And then under item nine, amendment modification on termination. Um, about halfway through, it says, any agreement to terminate disagreement and dissolve the joint powers board hereby established shall require, instead of unanimous agreement, an affirmative vote of two thirds of both parties prior to this agreement. And I think we all concur that if it was unanimous, that gives every individual a want to vote in body supreme power, because one person can stop the whole action. So those were the changes Mr. Kopecky made, um, for the document. Um, we also added the date of the nineteenth of November, which is today. Um, and so yes, we can open up discussion with the illustrious mayor. Commissions, do we have any other conversation that we want to have about this joint powers agreement?
I think about two out of three of those changes were included in the document that, uh, Mr. Spoor sent me yesterday. So he knew about those two. The third one that I do not see on what he sent me was the last one that talks about the affirmative vote of two thirds, which I think is probably a positive answer. So I think we're fine from what he has provided to me. So. Mayor, do you have anything, um, thoughts on where we're at?
Madam Chairman, County Commissioners. You know, I think this is obviously a, a good step to continue to support our process for the shooting complex. I am, uh, only concern is there are no legislators in the room, because I do think that's going to make it kind of be the interesting part this year. Um, but anything that we can do, I think, in advance of that legislative session to secure this joint powers board and start to move forward, populate that with some of our local citizens and and do a few more of the things that, that we as a committee have been kind of ongoing to keep this, uh, keep life going, that this project is worthwhile. So I think, uh, for the most part, I think Mr. Kopecky just had some, you know, more or less legalese things that he just was kind of throwing out there. So I think overall, we're, we're happy with it.
Um, we'll finish the discussion here before we send it to you all tonight, but my understanding is it's on your agenda for tonight to, so we get the blessing of city council.
I do have to double check that.
Okay, thank you.
If not, if it is not on there tonight, then we'll try and get to it as quickly as possible.
Okay, right, it'll, it may be in your court after today anyway, so we'll see where it goes. Um, the other question that we had, and I don't know if the cities moved forward at all, but we were discussing, um, making up the ad for, looking for board members for this to get that started. Knowing full well that even if we interview and, and kind of choose who we're thinking we want to move forward, nothing happens unless it's approved through the legislature and it keeps moving. So these board members may be appointed or put on hold conditional on the legislative approval of the final product. Does that make sense?
Madam Chair. The legislature, legislature will, will have nothing to do with the approval of the bylaws for the joint power report, my understanding.
No, I was tying that over.
Overall project, yeah, we would, we would hopefully hear back from the AG's office in a timely manner to where we could move forward with the final formation of the joint power board, if that's the way commissioners and the council, city council want to go.
I think we could go ahead and advertise. We probably don't want to interview until we know this is moving, I mean, that these are moving forward, at least the bylaws part. That makes sense? Okay.
Chairman, Commissioners, that the reason for that dissolution clause and that is because there is the very small chance that, that, that this would not make it through the legislative session. Because I'm an optimist, okay? And I think we've, we've done the right thing by the state of Wyoming, and we need to be honored for that, I guess. The joint powers board, by establishing it at this agreement, would, would basically give them, uh, give us a governance structure to operate that. So if we were to approve that and seat that board, the only thing that would happen if it did not get through the legislature is we would simply dissolve the board. Um, and so part of what we have going on right now is a number of different functions. As a governance body that Forward Cody is serving, that we would like to see passed to that joint powers board as their responsibility. It's things like contracting with archaeologists and paleontologists and design professionals. Um, we're doing that right now in, in the state of the project, just to assist the project move forward, but it would be more appropriate if the joint powers board had that responsibility, so.
Understand that. My concern would be the funding ability at this point. We haven't made any decisions on how that would be funded. I realize that Forward Cody has stepped forward and, and agreed to do a little bit of that with some funding that was acquired earlier. But how that would all meld together and how much work they could do until it's actually established by the legislature and funding is available, um, might be kind of a catch in there.
I, I don't think I need to let you know that, you know, we're all in on this project as Forward Cody, and even though I'm leading, um, it is anticipated that the person that follows me will be as engaged or more so than I have been through this process. Um, I certainly am not going to step away from it just because I'm not working for it anymore.
Commissioner?
Just for clarification, uh, who's going to advertise?
Well, we would advertise for our positions and the city would advertise for their positions.
Would it, Madam Chair, would it not make sense to maybe kick it together and do ad together, so it's not each paying for its own ad?
Madam Chairman, Commissioner Stewart, I have obviously no qualms with that. So I think if we just let the, um, I think whether it's Colleen or it's Cindy Baker, obviously, if your city Cody, just get together, look that out, it's fine with me. I would like to point out one thing. Madam Chairman, we do have a couple people with us that are here, specific to this, and that's Jennifer Tomma, our chamber director, and of course, our mayor-elect, Leanne Ryder, that is both here to answer questions too, if you haven't.
Well, give us your thoughts. Yeah, if there's anything that we've said so far that jumps out at you or you think we need to do differently, since you're all going to be involved in this thing as we move forward. Anything that you hear or think you want to change? Okay.
Yeah, Chair. Yeah, I will move the city of Cody pays for the advertising.
Yes. Do I have a second? No.
As far as putting this joint powers board together before the legislator decides, instead of waiting afterwards, um, what is the, what is the issue of waiting to see if there's actually approval and then putting together the joint body?
You're looking at me, but I know that my colleague here wants to take that.
So, Chairman and Commissioners, the, uh, the mayor pointed out the legislative concerns we have. And we know there are those in this state who feel like, uh, that maybe they have the opportunity to legislatively take this project, in spite of all the work that was done and the legitimate process that was carried out. Um, the only way we can combat that, unless we can miraculously come up with about thirty more senators and fifty more representatives in our, in our basin, um, is to basically get rid of all of the obstacles that they, they feel might be out there. And one of those is a governance structure. Who's going to run this thing? We've said from the outset that we felt the joint powers board was the most appropriate, uh, uh, means to do so. I think it would be valuable on January fourteenth to be able to say to the legislature, we have a governance structure in place. Um, and a board that's seated and been certified by the Attorney General's Office.
Madam Chair, I don't see any problem in actually populating that, that board. Um, I mean, it's a chicken and egg deal. We got to have, I think we, I, I don't, I think we should get the board set up. I think we should get it populated and not part from, I think, interview, dispopulate it and and I don't think it's not going to go through, but if it doesn't go through, it goes away. Because the, in those bylaws, it's for the promotion of the Wyoming state shooting. the Wyoming State Shooting Complex. So I don't see a unless we get a legal opinion from the AG's office that says we can't do it, I think we move forward with populating the board.
The other thing that that does is, is it gets it in place immediately when this thing has to be opened by twenty-six. We need to keep moving as much as we can. So if we waited until after legislative approval or another couple of months before we'd be able to seat the board. So this is kind of a preemptive step on getting some of that time ready.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I, I believe that you're aware that the, the state through the management council contracted with Forward Cody with fifty thousand dollars for some preliminary design work that's ongoing as we speak. So we're doing some of the work and it's, it's part of that attempt to check all the boxes. So when people say, what about your road? What about your easement? What about this? What about that? Our answer is done, it's over, it's completed. We want to show momentum and tangible progress towards making this happen to meet the deadline that you've, you've discussed. And because we need to meet the deadline, we want to get as many of these things done as we possibly can. So thank you.
Thank you.
So Madam Chair, so we're looking at probably the first meeting in January about putting these putting this board together before the legislators start meeting, I suppose. So that would be about not long to advertise.
Well, I think people are kind of watching for the advertising. There's not people interested.
We're getting the word out, getting the applications in and push through and getting the interviews done. So we're looking at sort of a time push right now.
We might be interviewing in January. Sounds like this. Yeah, we already have almost our December meetings are full. Most we have a special meeting. Now I don't know what the city's timeframe would be. I'm hoping pretty close to the same. We'll be able to. Any other thoughts? Are we okay with the changes that were stated today and, and moving forward? I know you've read a couple of drafts of this, but this would be the latest one and this would be the one that goes to city council for them to look at. And with concurrence from them, then it would be sent to the state AG's office for approval?
I'll take a snap of it. Madam Chair, I move that we approve the bylaws for the joint power board for the state shooting complex as presented. And move forward with advertising for those positions in concurrence with the city of Cody on approval of these bylaws by the Cody City Council. Second.
Okay.
So there's a little discussion on that. I think that would allow us if this passes and if the city council takes the same track, I think that would allow us to immediately have a time. The way, that's the way I'm intending this motion to be carried.
My understanding.
So we would not have to meet again to advertise.
We'll get together and get it done. Any further discussion on the motion? Okay. We move forward with the bylaws for the state shooting complex as presented. Move forward with advertising in conjunction with the city of Cody upon approval of the bylaws. Work with Cody to set up the joint powers. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I have clean copies, but I did notice one omission in my copy. I corrected Mr. Teal's last name.
Okay.
Mr. Kopecky's didn't, so I will clean that up. I will email a copy to Colleen.
Appreciate that.
So that you can go ahead and do your magic. Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. You'll, you'll let us know. Thank you.
You count down. Did you spell my name wrong too? You spelled my name wrong too?
Thank you.
No. Most people do.
Most people do.
A lot of things.
Germans just spell things different, right? Probably. What else we got going on?
Uh, we have the sheriff coming in for the executive session.
Oh.
But not until eleven thirty. The sheriff is out. Is he out there?
Yeah.
Personnel to legal?
Personnel.
Personnel. Is he sitting out there?
Yeah.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to go into executive session personnel.
Second.
I moved and seconded that we go into executive session regarding personnel. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. So with that.
We did.
It's not bad, Ben.
Some days just seem like...
So, all right.
You can admit it, Jenny. It's okay.
No, I'm sure it's the same way you feel.
All except for Lee.
Engineers were already in. I would say if anybody was coming, it might be Harold.
Can we go ahead and get some?
So we can start. We can meet him.
I didn't say.
I didn't hear. I've not heard.
Well, that's why I was kind of asking if the owner was planning to be here.
Okay.
And he just started too early as the owner's going.
Right. Yeah.
We'll give him two.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, reconvene the meeting and the first thing on our agenda this afternoon, I'm Jenny Kramer, Park County Planning and Zoning regarding Scott Simple Subdivision 321 Final Plat Review.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ronald Scott submitted a final plat application to request approval of the final plat of Scott SS 321 to create two 1.80 acre lots for residential use permanent existing 77 acre parcel. Ownership of the property has been affirmed to Ronald Lee Scott. The parcel is located approximately a mile and a half east of Ralston and east of County Road 13 in between County Lane 11 and Lane 11 and a half with an address of 1266 Lane 11 Powell. Neighboring land uses are ag, residential, and residential vacant land. Proposed Lot 1 has a permitted residence, accessory structures, a septic system, and a domestic water well. Proposed Lot 2 is undeveloped and used primarily for ag. The proposed subdivision is in a GRP zoning district and the lot sizes as proposed are consistent with that zoning district. Agencies were notified and responded as follows. Mdu stated they have a two-inch natural gas main on the north side of County Lane 11, and they can provide service to the proposed lot. Park County Fire District 1 stated they can provide fire suppression provided accesses are constructed to accommodate their fire equipment. Garden Light &amp; Power is able to serve the proposed subdivision. The Conservation District identified one primary soil type on the property, and it is considered not limited for dwellings and small commercial buildings. It is not considered to be prime farmland and is very limited in regard to septic tank absorption fields due to filtering capacity and seepage. The School District can provide bus service. Postal Service can deliver mail. Park County, we pests inspected the property and found noxious weeds. Therefore, a long-term noxious weed management plan is required, and that has been received by our office. DEQ provided a general list of activities and named associated permits required to conduct the stated activities for subdivisions. Wyoming Game and Fish stated they haven't, they do not have any trust for real wildlife comments and offered their standard subdivision recommendations. Treasurer stated that taxes are paid in full. TCT may be able to provide internet and phone service to the location. The parcel has legal access from Park County Lane 11 by direct frontage. And Lane 11 consists of a crushed base gravel surface and is maintained by the county. No new subdivision roads are proposed at this time. Proposed Lot 1 has an existing residence and an approved access point to Lane 11. A right-of-way permit application must be submitted to and approved by Public Works for any new accesses or improvements to access the county road. The remainder parcel is proposed to be accessed by direct frontage to Lane 11, and it's 100 feet in width. Any new structures that are constructed may be addressed after a building permit has been issued. A drainage and erosion control plan will not be required at this time. The applicant has provided an approved water distribution plan. No public comments have been received. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the subdivision with conditions on August 21st. The applicant has provided sufficient easements and identified them on the final plat as required. The applicant has placed the appropriate notes and conditions on the final plat regarding engineered septic systems, permitting requirements for wells, access approaches, and the Wyoming Rights to Farm and Ranch Act. The applicant provided written consent from all adjacent landowners that are perimeter fences not necessary. Plat Review Committee reviewed the final plat and a corrected plat was submitted back to us. Applicable final plat specifications have been met, and the applicant submitted supporting documents as specified in Appendix 4 of the regs. A subdivision improvements agreement is not required since no applicable improvements are proposed or incomplete. The Planning and Zoning Department staff recommends approval of the final plat of Scott SS-321 with the following conditions. Number one, the applicant in the presence of a member of the Planning and Zoning Department staff shall record the final plat and all required final plat submissions in the office of the county clerk and recorder. And number two, the applicant shall otherwise comply with standards in the Park County Development Regulations and the minimum subdivision requirements set forth in Wyoming Statute 18-5-306.
Thank you. Any questions for Jenny? This is a final plat. It's not a public hearing, so I would ask the pleasure of the board.
Madam Chair, move to approve the Scott Simple Subdivision 321 Final Plat Review with staff recommendations.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the Scott Simple Subdivision 321 Final Plat with recommendations. Any further discussion on the motion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jen. And that plat's back there, so resolution number?
Madam Chair, resolution 2024-65. Yes, we'll both print that resolution.
All right. Well, see what Mr. Edwards gets here.
Issue.
You're back.
What are you doing?
Madam Chair, just for the record, I'd like to state that we did receive another bid from a tandem at, for tandem axle bid from McCandless. Um, and it was received today at eleven A M, so therefore is not qualified to be open. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're up.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Uh, as you know, we opened bids this morning, we'll start with the pickup trucks. And this is for the Roden Bridge Division of the Public Works Department. Uh, this morning we received two bids. Um, and again, this is for two trucks, but uh, from Fremont Motors of Cody and Denny Menhold Chevrolet. Um, the bid from Fremont Motors Cody was a hundred and six thousand three seventy. And from Denny Menhold was ninety-seven thousand eight hundred eighty-four dollars and zero cents. After going back and looking at all the paperwork, delivery times, uh, warranty information, um, asking some questions and whatnot, we uh, went over with our mechanic and our Roden Bridge foreman. And uh, we're recommending that we award the um, bid for the pickups to Denny Menhold for the, the Silver Autos, the Chevys. And uh, for ninety-seven thousand eight hundred eighty-four dollars and zero cents and not exercise the trade, we will uh, look at selling those on the auction. That's the recommendation on that one.
Uh, does the board want to take action on the pickups first?
Madam Chair, I moved that we approve the bid from Denny Menhold with the amount of ninety-seven thousand eight hundred eighty-four dollars and five signatures.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve, um, to accept the bids from Denny Menhold for Silver Auto pickups. Two of them ninety-seven thousand eight hundred eighty-four dollars, no trades. Discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I guess I would address uh, Mr. Miller on this, is how does not having that trade affect you? I mean, is that, are you okay with that? I mean, or was that an option?
That was an option.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Okay. Right.
Yeah, we bid in both ways, so.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
Any other questions? Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes, so that's two pickups.
Thanks, thanks, Madam Chair. The other bid uh, was for uh, heavy trucks for our plow trucks and dumps. Uh, two of those uh, with Sanders plows. Um, and we ended up receiving. Uh, actually from three different companies. But I guess one, two, three, four, five, six different options. And mainly the difference in the options was the outfit. So like Peterbilt to Wyoming gave us two options, which was an Ameritech and a Coy Brothers outfit. Were the different, two different ones. Floyd's gave us three different options. Uh, which is the Coy Brothers, Ameritech and J Craft for the outfit. Um, so that was something we looked at, of course, the Mack truck. After talking to them a little bit more, they do their own upfitting. Uh, so there's not an, any of, there's not any add-ons for that as far as a, a third party. Um. After going all over everything there, we, we talked to, I think we talked about this a little bit, oh, and I will say, just I guess for the record that uh, the clerk's office informed us that we did receive a bid late. From uh, McCandless Trucking. And I did talk a lot to them, so I knew they were interested, so I was surprised when we didn't get that, but they've got it, uh, that it was late, so we will just discard that one. Um, but anyway, so out of the, the trucks that we, we had, we received on the bids. Uh, there was quite a bit of price difference from the low bid, which is the Mack truck from C, um, C M I. Uh, at five hundred and four thousand seven hundred and four dollars and zero cents. The others were all actually grouped pretty close together. Uh, the Peterbilt and the Western Star were from Coy Brothers were pretty close, so I think that's the three we were looking at is, is probably the, the Floyd's, the Peterbilt with the Coy Brothers outfit. Um, compared to the Mac, so we limited it down to those. Um, out of those, we've had good experience with Peterbilt, Western Star's been good for us. Um, both Floyd's and Peterbilt to Wyoming have been good. Um, so we've got a lot of, lot of history with them. With the C M I, we really don't have a lot of history, at least since I've been here in the last ten years. We did reach out to YDOT, uh, which they've got, um, two of them that we looked at and we ran overlooked at, so we went, looked at them with Roden Bridge Foreman and with our mechanic. And um, and they were real positive. Everything, we actually talked to Jim Berry also, who's, you know, so we talked to their mechanic side as far as the maintenance, then we talked to Jim as far as what guys think driving them and they like them, so. I think back in the day when Volvo bought them out, there were some issues that a lot of people heard about or know about. Um, mechanically, it sounds like a lot of that's been worked through and they've kept totally the Mac. Engine, I think they make them in Virginia or somewhere back east, you can't even been to the plant. So, that with them, then I guess we have no problem trying and, and using the Mack truck. Uh, the guys kind of want to give it a shot and see how they do. And then um, as far as, I think one of the concerns was the, not the Henderson outfit, which are the uh, the plow, the sander and the box, they're all Henderson with everything. Uh, I, we thought YDOT had that, but they actually didn't. Um, so there's still a few questions there, but I think it's things that we can probably work out with them. And uh, so I think our recommendation at this point is to award the bid to uh, C M I for the Mack truck at five hundred and four thousand seven hundred and four dollars and zero cents with no trades.
And, yes, just for clarification, you don't already have these?
No.
Okay.
Don't already have them?
It's down to twenty-four. That's supposed to be twenty-five?
Oh, that should be twenty. Yep.
Oh, yeah.
You know, when I sat there and read that coming in too.
Twenty-five.
Okay.
My best.
No worries. Yeah, they're, they're actually.
Already here.
They're out plots, no.
Yeah.
But that was another consideration too, that notice the, the time, the schedule. Um, again, we talked to uh, the rep, the salesman, the dealer, and he's pretty committed to that August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five. That date too. Um, he, that, that they could hit that date, and I think some of it's probably being able to do some of that in-house on the outfit. Um. But yeah, I think we're.
Does the warranty, I mean, I see that one's two hundred and fifty thousand miles, other one's a hundred thousand miles and then an unlimited miles, what uh? What's your thoughts on a warranty situation with this size of truck?
We, we can look at that a little bit more as far as like uh, pop, possibly looking at the extended warranty, because it is a little different than the other two. But I think for the price difference, we're.
When you have a list, several extended warranty options.
Yeah, do you have that?
It is. So for seven years, two hundred and fifty thousand miles engine and after treatment is fifty-three eighty-two, five thousand three hundred and eighty-two. Five-year remote diagnostics is three thousand. And towing coverage for seven years is a thousand eighty-three. Even if we.
You're still under.
Pretty large saving.
Okay. Just wondered. Any?
Uh, quite, when we spec them out, there's quite a horsepower difference between the P. Um, did we not spec uh, horsepower?
We, we did, we spec the, the five oh five was the minimum horsepower and they had, in fact, he came by the other day, Peterbilt. Theirs is set up a little different, but yeah, that, that's the, what they make, you know, so it's kind of a, I told them to go ahead and submit and that we would weigh all that, if you know what I mean, that the guys looked at, in fact, the guys drove one of them. So, I, I figured that was something we could. If we didn't have to, if they were okay with that with a different gear ratio and all that. That, I was gonna leave that up to the guys, but, but that was unknown that they would be.
We did spec a five.
We spec a five oh five.
Yeah, three hundred and eighty is, is fine on the flat, but you started pulling over. And then.
Agreed. Nope. Good points, but no, we just told them to go ahead and submit and that we would weigh that and see what.
Think your, your Peterbilt's gonna have a whole lot better resale value down the road, but I don't know whether it'd make that much difference. I, I, I'm not gonna, I'm just gonna sign the maps just to see how they hold up.
I think that's where we're at on it, we just, and haven't heard anything bad that we talked to, we talked to Lincoln County and then YDOT that's had some, so. I don't know.
Didn't talk about, but obviously you're not gonna accept their trade.
No, we're not, we're thinking we'd do better on the trades. Just sell it on the market. So yeah, we'd like to give the Max a shot. And we'll see what we end up with on the plow, but as far as the bid price, we're, we're set for that.
Okay.
Did you?
Questions?
Put that extended warranty on them.
Oh, you want that?
I don't think it'd be a bad idea for them. Just.
Probably the total. Yes, so. If we have an extended warrant.
Yeah, we may need somebody with a calculator, but, oh.
Got trapped right there. Five hundred and four seven oh four plus. You thinking just the uh. Actually, probably all three of those, huh?
I would.
That's.
Five fourteen one sixty-nine.
Five fourteen one sixty-nine, and that gets us uh. Oh, that's true. Um.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, that is probably true.
Three, eight, yeah, let's do this right five three two. So, the total for all three of those, the nine thousand four hundred and sixty-five dollars.
So if you took that times two, is that what we're talking?
Times two.
So add eighteen nine thirty plus the five oh four seven oh four. Still not a bad deal, five hundred and twenty-three thousand six hundred thirty-four dollars.
Five twenty-three, what?
Six thirty-four.
Okay, thank you.
And that'd be serviced out of uh, Casper.
Commissioners?
Madam Chair, I moved that we approved the bid from C M I Tico from Casper. With the added warranty in the amount of five hundred twenty-three thousand six hundred thirty-four dollars. Second.
Moved and seconded to accept the bid from C M I Tico, I guess is how you said that. Um. Inclusive of warranties on two dump trucks for a total of five hundred and twenty-three thousand six hundred and thirty-four dollars. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Thanks, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, just recognize the gentleman for actually showing up for.
Yes.
Their company and we appreciate you coming in.
And if the commissioners will hang around just a second, I T was gonna come up and look at what we want to do screen-wise and hear what we're comfortable with to be able to see. So, Lee, they're on their way.
Thanks, Bert.
I'll always let Andrew know we're. There are doors coming in? No, the doors haven't, no, there's Andrew, because I don't need to call. Um, the doors, one of them's in Casper, the other one's on its way supposedly from Denver to Casper to the wholesaler and then they will be bringing them up and scheduling to put them in. So, Andrew, what are your thoughts?
So this is.
Josh.
What we're gonna think and. Watch, don't have. One TV here. Big, big by that, hardly, for you guys to see. Yeah, so we're gonna, this is a press here.
Right here.
Yes.
Okay.
And then wanna add a screen, either a corner here or possibly help here. Then one on the other side for the audience to see. This post here.
The conversation that you and I had yesterday downstairs to kind of kick this off was that it was going to be fairly large, similar to that.
Yeah, it'd be the same size as this one.
And it would hang up there, fine. So it would be that size screen up there for us to look at.
And you just hold it up there so we can.
I'm thinking budget time, guys, that's the biggest time that we use to use, that we usually use the screen, I mean, we know at times we need to look at this. But be, well, if we have them in these corners, it'll be closer for us. Yeah, that's hard for us to see.
For my audience. Is that screen, is that size of screen right there, basically where I, yeah.
People all be having their heads on?
Well, that's what we were talking about yesterday, they said they were gonna angle it a little bit, so it wouldn't be.
Yeah. Get out here.
Okay.
You ain't gonna hit your head on it.
I don't know. Looks like jumping around on chairs.
Are you afraid you're gonna hit your head on something?
We don't have that happen real often, the people jumping around on chairs.
I think that's the best.
I think that's the best for us.
Does it have to be that way, that we're actually want to use that screen?
I don't know.
We're not getting a new one, are we?
Or we have a service pump that's been set aside, you guys, since we bought them.
Yeah.
Same downstairs.
Here, it just needs to be mounted. So if we do that one up there, and then you're talking about two in these corners to go that way to the people in the front row or two, and this desk. And then behind that pillar for the people that are sitting back down.
Yeah, it's like the, the ones up here would cover, if you're sitting at the desk, you'd be able to see them. Or, just some of the front row there.
And then whistle off.
That's the main thing, getting rid of that. Is there, is there a reason mechanically for centering it on that pillar, on that pillar, or could it just be centered through it?
I think technically we could center the room, but then I don't know if. That, that would clear the heads and stuff, so that might not be a problem. It would just be like, oh, it's a little easier to hang on here, but it would rather.
I don't, I don't know, I just.
The, the other option, if you do the wall, why they're big, they could do, do offset on the sides, if you didn't want it.
Why do you care?
I'm just, I'm prepared to solve problems. I'm, I'm more worried about the ones in the audience, because that's where I'm gonna be.
We're not gonna let you in.
The, the other thought is, if we move the teams for the broadcast, you guys would be able to join the, the session on your individual voice stations and do what's being.
Oh, okay. So if we did our budget on teams, teams, we could have it here as well as up there.
Yeah, because I mean, ultimately, yeah, we do still want to have a screen, because sometimes you pull other stuff during the meeting.
Okay.
I think with that on the pole, then at least hide some of the wiring.
Yeah.
Well, embracing the bottom of it deeply, I guess. It's large.
Is that, I saw a twenty-three pillar, is it?
No, it's uh, it's nice. It would, but it has to stay there.
It's heavy.
Well, yeah, I get it.
And we tried to get rid of it. Okay, any other thoughts? What do you want? You want to do in the corners? Do in the corners, one there and one face back.
And then always add more layers.
And then you're putting in two more speakers to the back.
Yeah. Yeah. And ceiling.
Okay.
Okay, uh, yeah.
Okay.
Um, and it's getting out now, all the audience, but you guys, you have the ability to add, if you're in the back, you know.
Okay.
But it's like, hey, we're having, if you guys are having a. I don't know if you guys have anybody joining or.
We did last meeting and it was fine.
It was fine.
I, I thought it was fine, I don't know, Lloyd, could you hear him when he talked about stuff? Okay.
Depends on the person, a lot of answers, but. Depends on the person speaking, but yeah.
We need to run some of that. We're gonna run the hotline for five, for two. Cause it's about how that, some of that is.
And we're trying to be.
And we're trying to be. That's what they said yesterday. But I think up there, we might not notice something. Um, cameras, we were gonna do two.
Hundred yards to go to that, and you sure got so in three.
Forty is what I thought they said. Yeah, I can say.
It looks you.
Yeah, that tall down really. But I won't count. I keep you thinking that day.
They know you the other one. They knocked them in the other door.
That was, that was done flat, it's still.
I think so.
But it's diagonal, it's. Yeah, this is a. Four inch, so. A little. Shorter than the grid, but yeah.
Not by much. Okay.
Are, are these, are you guys waiting for someone to notch those? Ceiling tiles or? Yeah, we just need it. Okay. We have. Like an end to pass. From that rate. Thank you for the line, one of the box.
All right, and then once, well, if you know you're not gonna do anything on that back wall, we can have Adam going ahead and support that.
Artwork that was busted and.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Madam Chair, move your adjourners.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone to post?